Welcome back to honoring the women of the Terrace. Today, we have a very special guest. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Miranda Anaya. I am the city planner for the City of Temple Terrace.
Thank you so much for being here today with us, Miranda. I know you are a very, very busy woman. You said you're the city planner. Can you tell me a little bit about what that entails and what your day-to-day tasks are?
Sure, I oversee the Planning and Development Division. And so, the majority of my job is keeping the land development code and the comprehensive plan up to date and interpreting that code, which in a nutshell means that that guides the growth of the city and it implements some of the development standards.
So you're like the backbone of the Temple Terrace? Okay, that sounds like it could be very stressful. Is it for you?
It can be. I deal with a lot of the developers, whether they're trying to build a residential subdivision or if they want to come in and build a restaurant or retail center. I have to help and guide them, but it's also rewarding to do that.
Oh, I love that. Is there an experience that you're like super proud of? Anything that comes to mind?
Right now, we're updating our land development code. That's the first thing that comes to mind. It's, we're doing the workshops for those. But currently, right now, in general, I like to, it's always satisfying when we get to the end of the project and I can see that development come to fruition.
Like seeing the whole like new building in front of you?
Yeah, especially since we only live, or we're close by, a couple of minutes away, we can always drive out there and see how the development turns out.
I love that. That definitely sounds satisfying. I mentioned it could be, you know, stressful. What do you do to like decompress on your off time?
I, one of the great things about Temple Terrace is all the parks and recreation. So I love walking around all the amenities that we have here.
What's your favorite part?
I actually like the rec center the best, but I like going down to River, River Hills. Yeah.
Yeah, that one's really beautiful and it's been really nice lately. So I'm like, I want to go do a picnic. I want to do something fun. Yeah. So I want to ask, how did you get into this field of planning?
Yeah, so I went to school for my bachelor's in environmental management. It's interesting because I've always wanted to either do something that impacts where people live, work, and play. And so, one of the things with that is, you know, impacting everyone's everyday lives. And so, I always wanted to be that mediator between city government and the people. And a lot of people don't understand codes and especially land development code. So it's that midway to help people understand what's actually impacting their property and their surrounding community. And so, it's great because I get to do some of the civil engineering work, looking at site plans, and also a lot of it is interpretation as far as legal.
Wow, so it sounds like you wear like a lot of different hats?
Yeah.
And school, I love it. Where did you go to school?
University of West Florida. That's in the Panhandle in Pensacola.
Okay.
Great beaches.
Ooh, love that, especially summer's coming up.
Yep.
Love it. What would you say sets Temple Terrace apart from other cities that you've visited?
Like I said, I love the amenities that we have here, including the parks. I think actually City Council is one of the best councils I've ever seen. They definitely take the public's comments into consideration. They feel very deeply about it also because we're just, even though we're in an urban environment, it's very small community.
Yeah.
Feeling. And so, you can just tell that the city workers go above and beyond because they actually live, work here.
Yeah, absolutely. I used to live here. I'm, so I'm a part-time Temple Terrace native, but yeah, everyone is very goal-oriented and we all just want the same thing. And yeah, and even the residents who speak at City Council, they're always so involved. So I love that. What advice would you give to someone who is considering this career path, especially as a woman? What would you say?
To definitely get involved in your community. Change starts at your City Council meetings. So getting involved, knowing upcoming projects. You can definitely go to school for it. I advise you to ask other planners, planners that are already in the field. I know the job aspect-wise, there's a good job growth in planning. So it's going to be more needed in the future. So that's what I would say for planners is just to get involved in your community and ask other planners specifics because there's so many roles in planning. There's transportation planning where you're looking at the roadways. There's policy planning where you're more looking at the law and land use planning where you're looking at the actual type of development zoning. There are so many different types of planning that you can go into and specialize if you want to. But I would say, yeah, start with going to council meetings and getting involved in the community. As far as the woman aspect, future women of planners, I would say to just go for it because I feel like a lot of women have imposter syndrome and you don't feel qualified. But if, if you have the qualifications, then go for it and stop underestimating yourself. You're just as good as the men and the planners. And it used to be a male-dominated field and that's changed over the decades. So yeah, I would say you're definitely more than capable.
Being that it is Women's History Month, I do want to ask, do you feel like you, your being a woman has any effect on your work in city planning?
I think people are always concerned about what's happening with their property, about their neighborhood and just the city in itself. We definitely have an impact on their community as far as planning goes. And so, I think when it's a touchy subject, I can put a little bit of a woman's touch on it and be empathetic to that situation. Because sometimes, you know, being a director, I do have to be stern in some areas, but I also know when to have a softer tone of voice.
I love that.
And also, not that men can't do it, but I also feel bad.
So I'll call the meeting order and I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 2nd meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. It's always nice to see everybody. I'd like to remind you to please silence your electronic devices. And for those who wish to comment during public comment portion of the meeting, there are forms in the back of the room that you can fill out and deliver them to the city clerk to my left. And if you would please stand and join me in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we begin our meeting tonight in gratitude. We thank you that we live in a country that although not perfect, has enshrined in its constitution the core values of liberty and justice. Help us as local elected officials reflect these values in all we do. We thank you for our residents, our businesses, our terrific employees, and all the other stakeholders who make our city such an amazing place. Grant us wisdom and compassion tonight as we strive to advance the common good of all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So for those of you who don't often attend our council meetings, which is a lot of you, understandably, we have a fairly new tradition that we began a year, year and a half or so ago, where we begin our council meetings with a historical or interesting fact about the City of Temple Terrace or the surrounding region. And so, we rotate that duty around and despite my best efforts to elude it, it has now fallen on me tonight. So this is my turn in the barrel. So this started out as what I thought was a fun fact and then it took a turn and the fun went away and you'll see where I'm going with this as we go. So this is an article from the local paper in January 9th of 1949. At that time, it was called the Temple Terrace Town Crier. And it goes like this. This is, this is front page. It says, "Probably all of the residents of Temple Terrace have at one time or another visited other cities in Florida and commented on the rough streets encountered." Some things just don't change, do they? "Recently, several visitors to Temple Terrace made a comparison of streets in large cities and small cities and decided that we were indeed fortunate in having the system of paved roads that we have. Many of us as residents go to and from our homes on paved, clean streets and take them for granted. The city has approximately 22 miles of paved streets. The main tenants of these roads has been made possible, the maintenance of these roads has been made possible by the small tax of two cents per front foot on all property on a paved street. This tax is applied to vacant property as well as improved property. The tax is fair to owners of improved property as well as the owners of vacant property in that if the streets are not maintained and kept in good repair, the investment each owner has is depreciated by the deterioration of the streets. The next time you are in your car, we suggest that a ride through Temple Terrace will prove of much interest. Not only will it give you an idea of the problems faced by the city and the maintenance of these roads, but it will also make an enjoyable ride and one that people from Tampa and surrounding areas drive for miles to enjoy." So that was the fun fact and I thought, well, we're going to have our friends from the Transportation Planning Organization here. What a great thing. This will be really interesting. Not so much. So I did the little math, which I know is scary, but I do have a calculator. And 22 miles of roads, city streets, two cents per frontage foot equals $4,646 in 1949. $4,600. That's $211 per mile. So that doesn't tell you a whole lot unless you correct that for inflation because you say, well, what does that really mean today? So I corrected that for inflation. In today's dollars, that would be $60,300. And that would equate to 2,700 miles per mile. I'm rounding off a little bit, $2,700 per mile. But you'd think in 1949, that's a pretty good chunk of change. That's a significant investment. The other thing that I'm assuming, I don't know from the article, but I'm assuming they were using some of this, these funds to pave more streets. So some of that was probably going into new paving. So I thought, well, I wonder how that compares today, right? I thought that'll be a cool statistic to show that, you know, if you correct for inflation, you know, we're pretty good. That's where the fun goes away. So correct today in 2024, we have 81 miles of city streets, so about four times. We currently budget $750,000 to repave these streets. And up until fiscal year '23, that has been enough to repave our, every street in the city at about a 34-year interval, which I was really proud of. I used to go around talking about that. I'm not going to do that anymore. Prior to the FY '23, we used to, it used to cost about $60 per linear foot to repave the mill and overlay a city street. Since the budget in 2020, in '23, now we're going into '25, that number has gone from $60 a linear foot to $131 a linear foot. That's a 218% increase in the past two budget years, which means that our $750,000 that used to keep us on a 34-year pavement, repaving schedule now only keeps us on an 81-year repaving schedule, right? This is not good and it's not sustainable. What we used to be able to pave just under two and a half miles of city streets a year based on that $750,000, now it will do less than a mile. So in order to get back where we were on this schedule, and I'm not saying we're going to do this, but in order to get back, just trying to exemplify the problem, in order to get back on the schedule that we were on, not even to get any better, just to get back where we were, it would take an additional $885,000 in the operating budget, just to get back where we were. So I, I told you the fun went away, right? It was interesting at the beginning and then I'm like, oh my gosh, I wish I'd have picked something about the library or whatever. But so I want everybody to understand that these are real numbers. These are not political issues, they're math issues, right? And we're starting in a good spot because our streets are generally in pretty good repair. We're not starting behind the curve where every street we have needs to be repaved tomorrow. But if we as council and management don't get on top of this, if we allow this to continue unchecked, all of our streets will degrade at the same time. And then we have a problem that's almost impossible to dig out from. So we don't have the solutions to that yet, but I don't think that number is ever going to come down to $60 a foot like it was. So anyway, interesting, not fun. Sorry about that, but that's the reality of it. So, okay. That was an uplifting one then. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so we have some recognitions and some proclamations. The first one, I'd like to call our Library Division Director Teresa Fraser up to the podium. The first one is for National Library Week. Good evening. Thanks for being here. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds can come together and learn, and libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses. Libraries offer members of the community a welcoming space and opportunities to explore new passion through technology, programs, and services. Libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve. Libraries and librarians work to create an equitable society by providing free access to accurate information. Libraries are a resource for all community members regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status by offering services and educational programming that transform lives and strengthen communities. Now therefore, I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 7th through 13th as National Library Week." So would you like to say a few words?
Just like to thank the City Council, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Anaya, for your continued support. You know, the library couldn't do its job without you. And just let you know that in recognition of National Library Week, we've scheduled a solar eclipse for Monday at 3:00 AM to kick off all the exhibits. And we brought you some glasses so you can step out your door and enjoy it.
All right, thank you. Good, I'll get those to the clerk and she can pass them out. Great, thanks. Let's give her a run of applause.
That's a thought.
You have to be in the middle so they can get that.
All right.
All right.
That is a thought.
Thank you.
Next, would Public Safety Telecommunicator Training Coordinator Amy Hutchla please approach the podium? That's a mouthful. You have big business cards.
Yeah, it changes actually this week too.
It did.
Yeah, now the supervisor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good, yeah. That's terrific. I'm sorry I didn't have that in my notes or I would have said so.
It's okay. It just happened.
Well, congratulations. This is a proclamation in recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And it reads, "Whereas the City of Temple Terrace Police and Fire Public Safety Telecommunicators play a vital role in the protection of human life and property in our community and the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics. Telecommunicators are the first contact our citizens have when calling or texting for help during an emergency. They are the vital link in a chain of individuals who make up our emergency response system and provide vital, critical communication to the city's police, fire, and emergency medical services. While enduring long shifts in handling life and death emergencies, Temple Terrace Public Safety Telecommunicators set high standards in performing their duties 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Last year, the men and women of the Temple Terrace Communications Department answered 15,109 911 calls and 41,023 administrative calls. They monitored 33,281 police activity incidents and dispatched in-progress calls in an average of 1 minute and 35 seconds. The Temple Terrace Public Safety Telecommunicators were successful in dispatching 4,512 fire incidents in an average of 42 seconds. Each telecommunicator exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their many duties. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby designate April 14th through 20th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week." So would you like to say a few words?
Just again, thank you to this city, to the council, to our city manager, also to our police and fire chiefs for all the support that they give us and all of the understanding from all of our people. And a good job to my team because they work really hard.
Well, congratulations again on your promotion. And I'd also like to point out that Amy is not only our newest promotee, but she's also a lifelong Temple Terrace native. So we're very happy to have a homegrown person in that role. So thank you. Let's give her a run of applause.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Can I just add one?
Yes, please do.
So another walking out right now, but for the public, we just recognize a great group of public servants here. They work very, very hard. And the reason that they're working even harder now is that we have several openings for dispatchers. So if anyone is out there in the audience, watching at home or on the internet, I encourage you to apply. It's a great career and you can really make a truly, truly make a difference in the lives of people at their, probably their worst moments in their lives when they need that kind of counsel and guidance. So please, I encourage you to look us, look us up and hopefully apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anaya. Corporal Tandro Mahalapovis. Sergeant, Sergeant, I'm sorry. You know, when I read this, I thought I had missed a beat. And Mr. Jamie Robe of the Hillsborough Children's Board is here also. Please welcome. This is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And thank you both for being here. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the City of Temple Terrace's future prosperity depends on the healthy development of the children living in Hillsborough County, growing and learning within our diverse communities. Children who experience adverse childhood experiences are at a higher risk of short and long-term physical, psychological, and behavioral challenges that can impact the individual child and the greater community. Parents and caregivers who are provided with social support and resources are better equipped to provide safe and nurturing experiences for their children. The Department of Children and Families works to develop effective child abuse prevention strategies through partnerships created with citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. The Department of Children and Families and the Children's Board in collaboration would prevent child abuse. Florida's Pin Wheels for Prevention Campaign will be engaging communities throughout Hillsborough County in a coordinated effort to prevent child abuse and neglect by promoting awareness of healthy child, healthy child development, positive parenting practices, and the types of concrete support families need within their communities. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby set aside April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so, thank you both for being here. Would you both like to say a few words? Mr. Robe?
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Children's Board and the staff of the Children's Board, thank you for acknowledging this important month because one in seven children in our country has experienced some form of abuse. It's very hard to even talk about it. And it can be sexual abuse, mental abuse, emotional abuse, and just plain neglect. And it's through partnerships with City of Temple Terrace and other partners in the community that we're able to make an impact. And, and that's why the pinwheels that you put up in the city and all around Hillsborough County have been bringing awareness to this, this issue. And I invite any of you who haven't gone to the Children's Board Family Resource Center, which is located, one of them is located on Fowler Avenue over here. It's a beautiful facility. It's open to every member of our community. There's no cost to any of the programs and they can go over there and, and get support and help. And we just thank you very much for your partnership and all of this. And I am a resident of Temple Terrace, so I'm honored to be here as well.
We're happy to have you here. Thank you. Sergeant?
I just want to thank the Children's Board for providing the pinwheels. Over 200 pinwheels is what they provided us to be able to put throughout our city.
I saw them today out in front of the rec center. They really catch your eye. They're, yeah, they're very nice.
We'll see after tomorrow's windstorm, they might be flying down the street.
We'll be picking up pinwheels tomorrow.
We'll be getting, we'll get more.
Well, thank you both for all the work you do in our city and the county. And thank you for all your efforts and we're really happy to have you here. So let's give them a.
There might be implants, city mayor. There might be implants, city mayor.
All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure Utilities Director Troy Tench is still Utilities Director Troy Tench.
I am indeed.
Very good. So the next proclamation is for Water Conservation Month. And our Utilities Director Troy Tench is here to accept. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the State of Florida Water Management Districts in the City of Temple Terrace are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. The City of Temple Terrace and the State of Florida has, have designated April, typically a month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. Water is a basic and essential need for every living creature and every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference conserving water and promoting a healthy economy and community. The City of Temple Terrace is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resources by practicing water safety measures, water saving measures, and become more aware of the need to save water. For this, the 26th Year of Water Conservation Month, there will be a special focus on improving outdoor irrigation efficiency. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Water Conservation Month." Would you like to say a few words?
I would actually. First, I want to thank the council for acknowledging Water Conservation Month. It's a very valued commodity and I think it's going to only grow as we move into the future. I would also like to touch a little bit on the irrigation aspect. I think it's important to understand that research has shown that we use between 40 to upwards of 60% of our potable water for irrigation purposes in this region of Florida. We all know that Florida is a rapidly growing state. I think it's important for us to look at alternatives, Florida-friendly lawns, Florida-friendly landscaping, as well as drip irrigation and some of the other low-flow irrigation heads for, for that purpose. You know, as I, again, as I mentioned, Florida is rapidly growing. It's really kind of exceeding most people's expectations over the last couple of years. And I think it's important for us to do what we can to limit the use of. And I think it's important for us to do what we can to limit the use of potable water for non-potable purposes as to ensure that there's available drinking water for future Floridaans.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Tench. Thanks for being here with us tonight. So next, we have a couple of presentations. The first is from Dr. Rick Will, who is here from USF's Booma College of Business. Dr. Will has, I'll let him explain, but he has worked with our city over the past several months to help guide us through a new form of doing strategic planning. And so he is here tonight to present the results of that process. His report that he's going to give verbally to us, we will make available to the public. We'll incorporate that into the meeting packet somehow and we'll make this available to the public so they can see what we're looking at also. Dr. Will, thanks for being with us.
Glad to be here. We held a strategic planning session on February the 7th. Now, there was a lot of preparation from the council members before we got to the point where we held this discussion case. But for about two hours, we worked on the, the previous input and came up with a list of strategic suggestions that would be handed over to the city manager for consideration in a larger strategic planning or what you refer to as a goal setting. With those are some major categories that were, I guess, discovered in this particular process. And, you know, the first one having to do with growth and just, I'm going to capture just a few, but, you know, investigating annexation opportunities, promoting business engagement. Another category of citizen interaction and engagement and a variety of different points were brought up there, including enhancing communication efforts while maintaining citizen focus and increasing citizen engagement. Conducting a market analysis, identifying and addressing citizens' needs, investigating avenues for increased public school influence. And then there was another category called planning, which included, not limited to, but advanced long-range planning efforts in areas including expanding the city infrastructure, investment, developing some scenario planning, and also an item for revisiting CRA vision and marketing strategy. Also, a category was discovered with maintain and improve employee focus, improve employee retention, enhance professional development opportunities, maintain and improve competitive salaries and benefits, and create additional opportunities for employee engagement. And lastly, for this is a process improvement category, which is to establish a continuous process improvement and performance excellence program. And with that, I know the council has seen this list and had the opportunity to actually, you know, give some feedback, refine it before the, the final list was created. And so Mayor Ross, the, the, the list is in your hands. We did talk about mission, vision, values, core competency development, and although that's very appropriate in a strategic planning session for review, it was determined that this was going to be a, a larger bottom-up development effort that will take months, if not maybe a little over a year, to actually accomplish this. There's, there's a lot involved in actually doing that if you haven't done it for quite some time. But I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the list or...
Good, Dr. Will. And so council members, the, there's an appendix to this that has several links on it, a couple pages of links. I have that electronically, so I will send that electronically to you. Much easier to click on than have it like that. So questions, comments from Dr. Will?
Thank you for your efforts.
So just for the public certification, so these, these overarching strategic priorities are very useful to us as we enter the budget process here this month, which I'm going to talk about more later in the meeting. But the budget process and our budget priorities should reflect the priorities that the council has kind of established. And these are overarching, they're not necessarily tasks, but the tasks and the projects that we decide to fund should somehow promote these. So this is a big step for us and we're very appreciative of all your work on this. And I look forward to yielding the results of this.
One other comment, maybe to the residents of the City of Temple Terrace. This council was incredibly engaged in the discussion case. And one of the typical challenges in doing these Harvard-style discussion cases is keeping people at a strategic level. This council never faltered from staying at a strategic level. And that's very impressive.
Well, thank you. So I, I used to brag a lot about our repaving schedule, but I also brag about the quality of our council. I am very, very honored to be the mayor of a city that has a council this good. They are not all, I can tell you that. And we have a really outstanding council here. And it's not because we all see these things the same way, it's because we worked through that. So, so thank you again for your efforts on this. I greatly appreciate it and I will see you soon, I'm sure.
Stay in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Access 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan. Updating, our friends and colleagues here from the Transportation Planning Organization, Wally Gallart and Sarah Caper, are here to explain. Good evening. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Oh, good evening. Thank you so much. As you said, my name is Wally Gallart and I am with the Hillsborough Transportation Planning Organization. First, I want to take some time to acknowledge Mayor Ross and Councilman Schisler for allowing me to present tonight in front of the council, as well, as well as for Councilman Schisler's commitment and involvement with the TPO's Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Board. So tonight, my presentation will be an overview of each of the different slides and what each section of the TPO's Long Range Transportation Plan, Access 2050 Survey entails. Though I'm presenting it to you tonight, this is also intended to be helpful to all those listening and watching. Cool. Oh, cool. Thank you. By 2050, Hillsborough County is estimated to have a population of over 2 million people. Therefore, we need to make decisions on where money should be spent to ensure we have ways to walk, bike, drive, take a bus, and train to the places we need to go. So we have launched a survey for Access 2050, our Long Range Transportation Plan, to understand what your priorities and values are. Access 2050 is about reaching all voices, and we're using innovative outreach methods and working closely with community leaders, ensuring boots-on-the-ground engagement to access even the hardest-to-reach communities and residents. Our survey is available in multiple languages, is ADA compliant, and accessible via any digital device or through hard copies. The survey also includes all modes of transportation, as we ask you to give input on transportation projects that are important to you. We're dedicated to providing access to everyone. The Access 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan looks 25 years and directs federal and state dollars towards transportation investments that you value. We update the plan every year, excuse me, every five years, and this one will be adopted in October of 2024. In this survey, you will share your thoughts and ideas on priority transportation projects, how to fund them, and what major projects you support. Your thoughts matter in shaping the future of these projects. You can take our survey by, by visiting access2050.org, scanning the QR code on the screen, or filling out the paper survey. I'll show this QR code again at the very end. So upon entering the website, you will land on the welcome page for the Access 2050 Transportation Survey. After reading the prompts, click on the green next button to continue to priorities tab and begin the very first part of the survey. Let's move to the next screen so you can tell us what is important to you. So in the priorities tab, you will drag your top five transportation priorities above the dotted line and make sure to rank them in order of importance. Once you list your top five transportation priorities, you are ready to move on to the funding sources tab by clicking on the white double arrows or clicking on the green tab titled Funding Sources. On this screen, we want to know your thoughts on how we should pay for transportation. The Funding Sources tab has five options that will, that we will need your input on. Each section will require you to answer the questions with approval or disapproval using the green thumb to approve or the red thumb to disapprove. You will also be able to leave a comment for each question by clicking on the gray circle with the white comment sign. For more information about each of the funding sources, you can click the information icon in the top left corner. Let's go through each of these five options. The first option is the Community Investment Tax. This is a current tax that benefits education, public safety, and transportation. For median-income individuals, they would pay approximately $53 per year for a half-cent tax or $106 per year for a one-cent tax. The second option is the Gas Tax. This is about seven cents per gallon and funds many of our transportation projects. A gas tax is a fee imposed by the government on each gallon of gasoline sold, and the money collected goes towards maintaining and building roads and highways. The third option is the Transit Service Property Tax that funds bus service and maintenance. A home with a median assessed value of approximately $200,000 would pay $100 per year at the current rate of half mil. An increase to $1 per $1,000 of assessed home value would increase that to $200, and an increase to $3 per $1,000 of assessed home value would equal $600. The fourth option is the Express Toll Lanes, like those currently on the Veterans and Salmon Expressways. Express toll lanes on highways are used to reduce traffic. Toll prices can be set to remain constant at all times, while others can be adjusted to traffic levels. And finally, the fifth option is other funding sources, like the driver license fee and ride share services. These funding sources would require advocacy from the community and may, may require approval by the Florida Legislature to be implemented. After completing all five sections on this tab, please click on the white double arrows or click on the red tab titled Major Projects to move on. On the Major Projects tab, you will find a map which shows 23 potential projects designed to reduce congestion and provide access to key job centers. Please click on each colored bubble and let us know if you support the transportation project by clicking on the green yes button or the red no button. May also leave a comment on each project if you have additional questions or concerns. Each of these projects are broken out by color. The legend indicates red projects as highway widening. The purple projects are elevated or managed lanes. The green projects are transit projects, and the yellow indicates new or modified interchange projects. We will start by walking you through the four yellow projects, which are the new or modified interchange projects, and we will start in far south county and move north. The first one is the new interchange on I-75, which would build a new interchange at I-75 near Fort Hammer. Next is the I-75 Interchange Reconstruction, which would reconstruct the interchange at I-75 and US 301. Then we have the new I-275 interchange, which would build a new interchange at I-275 near US 41. And then finally, we have a new interchange, I-75, which would build a new interchange at I-75 near Harney Road. Next, we'll look at the six green projects, which are transit projects. We're starting on the top left, west side of the county, and moving east. First is the East-West Metro Rapid. This transit project would be a rapid bus service connecting communities from west shore and the airport to Temple Terrace. Second, we have the CSX South Tampa Multimodal Corridor, and this corridor has been identified by various agencies as a prime opportunity for fixed guideway, transit, and trails. Next, we have the Downtown Tampa USF Brandon Premium Transit, which would create an exclusive guideway connecting the active areas of USF Downtown and Brandon. Next, we have the Street Car Extension, and this extension would be from Fort Brook Garage to Palm Avenue. Then we have the Regional Passenger Transit, excuse me, yeah, Regional Passenger Transit that would be from Brooksville to Bradenton passing through Hillsborough County. And finally, we have the USF to Brandon Bus Rapid Transit, BRT, and this rapid bus service would connect USF to Brandon along 50th and 56th Street. Next, we'll look at the six purple projects, which are elevated or managed lane projects. We're starting on the bridges over the bay, from left to right, on the west side of the county, and moving east. First, we have the I-275 Managed Lanes, which would add two express toll lanes in each direction. Next is the Gandy Bridge, which would aim to replace the existing Gandy Bridge with a new elevated highway connecting to the Salmon Expressway. Third, we have the Suncoast Parkway Widening, and this would widen Suncoast Parkway at Van Dyke Road to State Road 54 from four to six lanes. Next, we have the I-75 North Managed Lanes, and this project would add two express toll lanes in each direction. Then we have the I-4 Managed Lanes, and this project would add two express toll lanes in each direction. And finally, we have the I-75 South Managed Lanes Project, which would add two express toll lanes in each direction. Now we'll look at the seven red projects, which are highway widening projects, again, starting on the top left, west side of the county and moving east. First, we have the I-275 Widening, and this project aims to broaden I-275 along Hillsborough Avenue to Bear's Avenue from six to eight lanes. Next is the US Highway 301 Express Extension. This project seeks to build a new elevated highway above US 301 from the Salmon Expressway to Big Ben Road. Please note that US 301 is multicolored because the transit service is part of that project, according to both Thea and Hart. Third is the Baum Road Widening, and this project would expand Baum Road along Clement Pride Boulevard to Baum Riverview Road from two to four lanes. Fourth, we have the Lithia Pinecrest Road Widening, and this project would take Lithia Pinecrest Road along Kings Avenue to West Hawk Boulevard from two to four lanes. Fifth, we, we have the State Road 60 Widening, and this project would broaden State Road 60 along South Valrico Road to the Polk County Line from four to six lanes. Next is County Road 39, and this project would take County Road 39 along State Road 674 to State Road 60 from two to four lanes. And finally, the US 92 Widening, and this project would expand US 92 along Park Road to the Polk County Line from two to four lanes. Once you have finished, please click on the double white arrows to move on, or simply click on the blue tab titled Wrap Up to move on to the wrap-up section of the survey. On this screen of the survey, please provide us with your zip code and answer a few optional questions. After filling out the form, click Finish to submit your survey. Participants who provide an email address will be entered for the prize drawings, including sports tickets, concert tickets, a gift card, and more. Survey completion is not required. The last day to take the survey is April 15th, and after that, we'll be doing the survey and outreach analysis. And the Access 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan will be going to the board for adoption on October 16th, 2024. Today, we ask that you, as elected officials, help the TPO share this survey to your constituents and spread the word for one final push as we begin to conclude our outreach efforts. As mentioned before, this survey closes on the 15th of this month. Now I'm joined here today by Sarah Caper, who's an executive planner with the TPO. Her and I would be more than happy to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallart. Council members, Councilman Schisler?
I heard this presentation about a month or so ago, and I felt it was very important that we brought it up here. The A, that we all take it, take the survey, and B, we publish it and let everybody know as best we can so that our residents have an opportunity to participate. I do have one, if, if everything was done, how much would it cost? Any idea? Has anybody done the calc?
We're still working on those numbers.
Okay, it's got to be a big number. It's got to be a way big number. But there's, there's, there are several projects in there that affect Temple Terrace directly. The interchange out by Harney, that would be significant for east, east part of the city, as well as the BRT out to Brandon. as well as the BRT out to Brandon. There's just a whole bunch of them. So I appreciate you coming in. I thank you for giving up your evening to sit through the council meeting and make a presentation, a very good presentation. And I encourage everybody to take the survey. I've done it already, and we need the input. We need to know. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Abel?
I'd also like to thank you for the survey, and I did it last week also, so I'm in the completed team. But I would be curious about what the results would say, and if you all publish those results and compare them to 2045 and previous years.
We do publish the results, and we'd be happy to share that information with you. I know Mayor Ross has a presentation on it at the TPO Board, but it's public information, and we can definitely share the results. It might not be a direct comparison from all of what was done five years ago with 2045, but we do look at what's changed in information like that.
Thank you.
I do.
Oh, councilmember Fernandez, I don't know what you...
I didn't want to jump in. A couple of questions. For this, have any assumptions changed since the 2045 survey? So are we expecting more people to move here than we previously expected, or has any of that stayed the same?
We do look at that every five years when we update the plan, so we've been working on that for the past about a year. And we do update the demographic information, so we have looked at how many people we think are moving here between now and 2050, so not only adjusting what we might have assumed before, but also adding that five-year period, and also what the composition of jobs might look like. So we do every five years, and we have been working on changing some of those assumptions and updating our modeling efforts to account for that.
So when this survey is completed, this will get presented to the TPO, but is this, we're really looking at this being funded out of Hillsborough County, or would there be other?
There are a range of funding sources that we look at, and that's why the funding questions in the survey are so important for us. One of the requirements of the TPO by the federal and state government is that our long-range transportation plan is cost feasible. So we have to reasonably assume that the funding sources are ones that we can count on for the future, and that's why it's so important to understand what our funding sources are today, and also what the community believes we should value for funding sources in the future. And that helps us understand what projects we think we can fund and with what kinds of funding sources, whether it's federal, state, or local, and what projects are part of the needs plan but not ones that we think we can reasonably fund.
So what entity would actually be approving any of these projects? Would it be multiple entities or one entity in particular, FDOT, or...?
Multiple entities. It is required in order to get state or federal funding that a transportation project is in the long-range transportation plan. So whether it's FDOT who's doing the work and it's in their work program, or whether it's a different agency, if they're seeking federal or state funding for transportation, that project has to be consistent and in our long-range transportation plan or our five-year transportation improvement program.
So then my last question is with regard to getting this out to people. We have a couple of static places in the city where people routinely go, which would be the Family Rec Center, Lightfoot, and the library. Is it possible, or do you have something that would be assigned that would have the QR code or something that could be put up in a location?
We brought with us rack cards to leave with you, but if you would like something else, please let us know, or your staff can let us know, and we'd be happy to provide something else. We can also bring more cards if this isn't enough for those locations. But we would love for you to put this anywhere where you think people might see it and take it.
Councilmember Chambers?
Thank you. I know you don't have the answer to this question, but when you're talking about funding sources, one of them was the seven cents gas tax. In the data or the little bubble you can click on, does it say anything in there to know the difference between cars now are getting less, better mileage, so they're spending less gallons? So that's going down, but then there's more cars, so that's going up. So is there a way in your documentation to show how that funding source has been growing or not growing over the years so you can make a determination of funding sources?
I'm not sure if it's in there that way, but that does go into our calculations. The Florida Department of Transportation produces a revenue analysis that assists us, and it does analyze that information, but I'm not certain what the survey bubble says about that specific funding source.
Okay, all right.
I have seen that data, though. I could get it.
Well, just if I was gonna look at that funding source, I want to know, is seven cents enough? And, you know, is it falling or growing?
Correct me from wrong, but I can tell you from my role on the TPO that the gas tax funding is woefully inadequate.
Okay.
You are correct.
Yeah.
Anything else, councilmember?
I'm good. Good, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you staying and visiting with us tonight, and so I really appreciate you coming out. Thanks, Gil, for asking to come out. Thank you.
Great job.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our March 19th meeting?
So moved.
Any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays, the minutes are adopted. Next, is the persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda? We have forms in the back of the room if there are members of the public here who have not filled them out and wish to address the council. I currently have one request from Mr. Loeb. Mr. Loeb, you are up, sir.
My name is Charles Loeb of the 4912 East Line by Avenue Terrace Park. The first thing I want to do was talk about the hardboard meeting. It's been the first time I've been to one since before COVID. If you wanted to know where your tax money, about tax money, the meeting, going to the hardboard meeting, would have been the place to be yesterday. First of all, they were talking about the court settlement. It looks like it's in the process of occurring, but they have to get the court's final approval. But it does look like in principle that there will be a settlement coming up pretty soon as soon as they get the approval of the court. Secondly, I don't want to go too much into this topic because I feel this is Councilman Schisler's topic, but they had this thing about the changing the charter for the hardboard. It's been the same way since 1980, 44 years. And one thing that got talking about was the millage in dealing with transportation, so I'm gonna leave that at that if he wants to talk about more, especially being that he's the chairman on the board on that. Another thing that I did notice at the hardboard meeting was that they put the specific dates for the National League of Cities meetings. I did want to mention that because I've talked about before here about putting a presentation for the City of Temple Terrace together if you want to have before the National League of Cities. That is going to be November 13th to 16th, which is a Wednesday through Saturday. So if you have something ready, hopefully you have something ready to press other cities, so in case you do want the representatives from other cities here. Another thing, I did want to go, of course, Ballarat. I did have a little success, maybe, with a man from staff who does the charge of the presentations. His name is Justin Willowitz. He's the person that does presentations and all that. He does seem to be interested in my ideas for dealing with BRT between USF and downtown, and also about the Fowler Avenue study. Today, I wrote a about three and a half, four-page detailed, more information where I was able to kind of sidebar with him over at the hardboard meeting. And that's pretty much what I guess I wanted to tell you, except I went and tried my hardest to fight for my program, and, well, didn't quite do as well as I would have liked to, of course, you never really do. One other thing I did want to remind now, especially with the water department here, the water conservation, that don't forget April 22nd is Earth Day, and I did want to mention this too, so again, even more to think about it. So thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays, consent agenda is adopted. Next item is a resolution approving the sale of approximately 2,500 square feet of city property located at the rear lot line of 6725 Drifting Sands Road, and our deputy city attorney, Ernie Mueller, is here to explain.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said before, it's going to be a resolution approving the sale of approximately 2,500 square feet of city-owned property to the owners of 6725 Drifting Sands Road. This 2,500 square feet is part of an old railroad right-of-way that the city bought from Seaboard, they purchased it in fee simple from the Seaboard Coastline Railroad back in 1973. The purchase price of this 2,500 square foot parcel is $6,000, plus the owners of 6725 Drifting Sands will be paying any closing costs. The property will transfer by quick claim deed, and the city will be reserving a non-exclusive easement across the entire 2,500 square feet. Brian has brought up the diagram there, and I believe you will have seen this from, I believe, the last meeting where you vacated right-of-way at the rear of 6725. So when we sell them this property, we will be kind of replacing that easement by having it laying all over, you know, having that easement lay across this 2,500 square feet. That's really all I have. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Councilmembers, are there questions? Okay, if there are no questions, is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution approving the sale of approximately 2,500 square feet of city property at the rear lot line of 6725 Drifting Sands Road.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion of the motion. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays, resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Is there any carryover council business from previous meetings? Carryover, Vice Mayor?
I was just thinking the same thing she just told me, which is Bike With the Mayor was rescheduled. It was a couple of Fridays ago, but it got rained out, so it's actually going to be this coming Friday. The date of that is April 5th.
Thank you. Thank you, I should have said that. Any other carryover business? Thank you. Good catch. That's why there's five of us. Any other council business? Very good. New business?
You need to be there on Friday.
New business or board reports?
I guess.
Councilmember Schisler?
Give an update on what's going on with Hart. Said everybody's on the same page. We at Hart, or the Hart Board, I should say, has been struggling with financial, coming up with new financial, new revenue sources. And about six months ago, I recommended the establishment of an ad hoc committee to investigate these options, and I thereby got appointed to it by the board chair, so, you know, no good deed ever goes unpunished. But anyway, we've met numerous times, and we kicked around ideas, but we come back to one problem. We can't do anything without changing the charter. Charter's maxed out at a half a mil of property value. Even Pinellas County is at .75 mils. So we're pretty much hamstrung with being able to do anything. So whether we participate in CIT, whether we come up with some type of a city ad valorem only, or a county ad valorem, or countywide, or whatever, we got to start with changing the charter. So that issue came up yesterday, and after much wrangling, we got a motion approved to establish a charter review group commission, or if you will, to, you know, as Mr. Loeb had said, nobody's looked at this since 1980. So 44 years ago, there's even verbiage issues that need to be corrected, much as we did back in 2016 and 17. So there'll be, there was a lot of consternation as to wanting to put an ad valorem referendum in front of the public this time around. There's not enough time to do it for 2024. If anything, it could be 2026. But the process is the, any charter review, any charter revisions has to be approved by the Hart Board. Then it's got to go on the road and be approved by the City of Temple Terrace, City of Tampa, and Hillsborough County. Then it gets approved by the public, any changes that come out of that. So it's a long road. It's going to be, it's going to take a long time to do, but it's not going to happen until we take the first step, and that step was taken yesterday. So I will keep everybody abreast as to what happens, where it's going, and we'll go from there. So if you ever have any questions?
When, or do you know, do you have any anticipated timeframe of when you would hope to see the charter review commission established and begin having meetings?
I would hope it happens pretty quickly. I'm going to lobby for that through the board chair. It'll be established by the board chair, and I would expect that to, I would hope it happens in the next 30 days, at least we get started and can form and get ourselves set up.
How will the commission members be at...
Couldn't tell you. Couldn't, I have no idea. It was contentious enough getting this through. That was not approached.
The chair is still Louis Vieira?
Correct. Correct. That's all I got.
Okay. Other board reports, any questions on this? Okay. Other new business or board reports? If you'll indulge me for just a couple of minutes, I'd like to walk the public through a little something real quick. There's both of you here, but there's people on television as well. There's three of you. So the City of Temple Terrace is just about to embark on our annual budget development process for fiscal year '25. This is the time of year when we start that each year. Just to let everybody know how this is going on, because all of a sudden, we start having public meetings about this to pass the budget, but this is actually a long process. So this month, we begin that process by having a goal-setting meeting with staff and the council members. And of course, all our meetings are public, but we get very few people that come to these. And at this meeting, we will kind of look at these, this year, we'll look at the product of the strategic planning session that we had with Dr. Will, and we will discuss priorities, projects, that each of us will present what we think ought to be funded for this year, and then we have discussion until we agree on these are the kinds of things that we think we should try to do in fiscal year '25. Once we establish those priorities, staff starts to work on, well, they probably already started to work, but they start to put these priorities into the budget. We then have a series of meetings between May and July. Usually, we're done in July. If it spills over, it can go into August, but usually, we're done in July. We have a series of meetings where we go through each section of the budget. We start, usually, we start with operating. We talk about capital, then we talk about the enterprise funds, the water and sewer rates, and the sanitation rates, and what it takes to keep these funds healthy. I talked about capital, what kind of projects that we can accomplish. And so once we've made it through all these funds, usually by July, then we set the millage, which is in August, is it not? And usually, it's in August? Yeah, it's in August. We have a meeting, we set the millage. The budget meetings, as I said, they're usually, they're public, but we don't usually get a lot of public, first of all, they have to be during business hours because we need our whole staff here to do this, and so they're a little harder for people to get to if they're working because they're during the daytime. But they are public, they're here. We do televise them, we record them, right? And so we try to make them available to people who want to watch them later when they can on YouTube and so forth. And then in September, we will, at a regular council meeting, we'll have two readings of the final budget. So that's kind of the process, how it happens. Like I said, for a lot of the public, they don't see this until September, and they're like, you know, I wanted to give everybody an idea of how the sausage is made. It's a very labor-intensive project, particularly for staff, but it works. And I'm proud to say that our finance team now we have is tremendous. They were, last year was much, much easier. We sailed through the process in half the time probably than we have in some years in the past, so anyhow, I wanted to let the public know that. I don't know if anybody cares about that, but that's what we do, and there it is. So, all right, any other new business? So, all right. Any other new business? Okay. City manager? Really? Wow, that's good news. No news is good news. City attorney? Nothing. Okay.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Let me read this. You guys, can we another half hour?
Anything, directors? Good? Anything? Okay, good. So thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you for all your continued hard work, and we will be adjourned.